Holy Lord God, be in the midst of our giving of thanks this year. Let us be truly grateful for what you have given us regardless of struggles or strife or sadness. Tonight, we especially ask you to bless and comfort our neighbors in California who still suffer from fires that have devastated their homes, their property, and their loved ones. Those numbers, thirteen hundred unaccounted for, they bother us, not knowing if they are dead or simply lost. Remind us that in your eyes, nobody is unaccounted for. You even count the number of hairs on our heads. And grant us the grace to see the number of needs in our community and the best ways to meet them in Casa Grande, especially for those less fortunate than ourselves. In all of this, grant us the grace to work together for your glory. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, Matt. Okay. Tonight's roll call, we are missing Mary. Would someone like to offer an excuse?
Move to excuse.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so note Mary is excused. The rest of us are here.
Mayor McFarland, regarding minutes, I move the approval of the City Council Regular Meeting Minutes from November 5th, 2018, and that we accept for the record the Casa Grande Youth Commission Minutes from October 13th, Planning and Zoning Commission Minutes from October 4th, and the Arts and Humanities Commission Minutes from October 3rd as they're presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I have a change.
Oh.
I don't know when to do that.
If it's on the minutes?
The council meeting?
No.
Of November 5th, on Resolution 5145, I voted no on the carpet one for local, and it said that I voted yes in the minutes.
Say that again, Mr. Mayor.
Resolution 5145, I voted no.
Okay.
And in the minutes, it says I voted yes.
All right.
So I guess move to amend that. I move to amend the...
Okay.
Did you just do that now, Brett? Okay. Move to amend the City Council Minutes of November 5th.
Item C1.
Yeah.
So item C1 will be amended to show that Matt voted no on 5145.
5145.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Then with that noted change, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you for noting that.
There was a motion to amend.
We have to vote on the motion now.
Still need to vote on the minutes. That was just a vote on the amended to the minutes.
Okay.
And then you still need to vote on the minutes proper.
Okay.
There was a first and a second already.
Yeah, there already was a first and a second. Okay, so then all those in favor of them as presented with the changes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so minutes are all approved. Claims?
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated October 31st, November and November 13th, 2018, as presented.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the claims. Item D, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm saying mayor.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay, so we have another...
I'll do it.
Yeah, so we have a quorum, right? Okay, no special presentations. Consent agenda items tonight, all items, yes.
Do you have the meeting agenda approval?
No, I blew by it. Sorry.
Oh, did you?
Yeah. I checked it off, though.
Okay.
How do you say "got done"?
He's like, efficiency.
Moving along here. Any changes from staff? Counsel?
No.
Seeing no changes, then...
I move to approve the meeting agenda as presented. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the meeting, tonight's meeting agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now it's approved, Larry. Okay, consent agenda, all items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion, one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Does anyone have anything you want to pull?
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Carla, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Okay, so the consent agenda items are approved. I will open the floor to public comments at this time. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address counsel, please approach the podium, state your name and your address for us. Okay, seeing none, then I will close the floor and we'll move to, okay, item I, right? Mm-hmm. Okay, I won. Is that you, Kevin?
Yes, sir. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council award a contract to Sunline Contracting in an amount not to exceed $200,000 for our annual pavement striping and maintenance program of our city streets. We did do a formal solicitation and received three bids for the striping project, and Sunline Contracting was the lowest response of bidder. This is a company that we have used for several years now and has done a great job providing the services for our striping program. We try to stripe every street in town every three to five years, but depending on the amount of vehicle traffic, some streets get striped more often and some less often. And we use a combination of waterborne paint as well as thermoplastic, depending on the roadway and its use. We do have this first contract here with two additional one-year periods to extend this contract. In our budget, our $1.8 million pavement preservation budget, $200,000 is carved out for striping. We don't anticipate spending the entire amount, but we do want the full budget authority so that if we have any changes to our program as it sits today, we can take advantage of this contract this year. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Seeing none?
Move.
I need an ordinance number, please.
Ordinance number 3106. And it is an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, accepting a bid from Sunline Contracting LLC to provide pavement striping maintenance for up to three years, authorizing expenditure of public funds in an initial amount not to exceed $200,000, and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 3106 as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please, Carla?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes, although I want just to add that it was unusual, but there was a truck coming through town tonight with seven zebras and three tigers, bringing them in for re-striping.
And the horses, how about the horses? No horses?
The horses when they came in and the zebras went in there.
Mayor Protem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Item I2.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Staff is recommending the mayor and city council approve a contract with Gravity Research LLC to provide project management consulting services on projects at Carmacnat Park and the main library. As you recall, at the last city council meeting, the GMP for the Carmacnat project was approved. The main library project is nearing the end of design and is working on developing a GMP and timeline at this time. These are the two projects that would be covered by this contract. This was a competitive process that we had an RFQ advertised by the city of Casa Grande. Four firms were responded, or, excuse me, four firms responded to the RFQ. All four were interviewed. Our selection committee recommended Gravity Research for the following reasons: depth of experience with the construction companies that were selected, vast knowledge of the projects within the city of Casa Grande, significant experience with the city's processes, building codes and objectives, and extensive construction management skill. The proposed fixed price for this contract is $107,000 plus any reimbursable costs. Billing would commence at the earlier of the completion of the Community Recreation Center project or in July of 2019. This will help the city by allowing for the majority of the billing for these projects to occur in the next fiscal year. While the focus of this RCA is on the consulting for this project management, I'd be happy to answer questions regarding either of the projects also. So at this time, I'd stand for questions.
Any questions or comments?
Just comment. I certainly approve of who you lined up with to do this.
Okay. Can I get a, yes?
I'd just like to add that it's a great opportunity, and you always go above and beyond the projects, and really shows that you care about not only the projects but the community, so great job.
Okay, anybody else? All right, seeing none, then can I get an ordinance, please, Carla?
Ordinance number 3107. An ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal for professional services from Gravity Research LLC to provide project management consulting services, authorizing expenditure of public funds in an amount not to exceed $107,000 plus costs, and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of ordinance number 3107 as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Carla, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Okay, item I3, planning and development?
Staff seeks approval from the mayor and council to spend $35,000 to purchase relay permits for the web software, also known as web permits, from Selectron as a sole source provider. The web permit software will allow building applicants, building permit applicants, including contractors and homeowners, to request inspections associated with any active building permit via the web, the internet, using their smartphones, laptops, tablets, or PC. Web permits will automatically load this inspection request into the laptop of the assigned inspector for that permit and allow for next day inspection services. The software will also allow the contractor or the homeowner, in that case, to see in real time the result of the inspection, i.e. pass, fail, and if it failed, the reasons for the failure. The building department has historically used a phone-based inspection request system called IVR, also developed by Selectron, but that technology is becoming outdated. In an effort to improve customer service, we have taken the IVR phone-based system offline, and we wish to replace it with this new web-based inspection services. The web permits application was a, is a funded CIP and will enhance the customer service associated with our building permit program. Web permits also has the potential to be used by the fire department for their inspection program, as well as the public works department for their construction inspectors. Be happy to answer questions you might have.
Just a comment. I mean, I just think it's great. I mean, has this been out for a while? Have we missed this for that long? I mean, it just seems like it's something that can be so easy for people.
This is kind of a new product that's been developed by Selectron.
Okay.
And because their phone-based system's getting kind of outdated, it was kind of a phone-based system where you plugged in your inspection number or something, your permit number, and asked for inspection. So this is an upgrade, if you will, by this firm.
Good.
Yeah, and I will echo Lisa's comments. This is, this is, this is good customer service process, I think, and I think the next step obviously is if we can electronically do all of the applications and all of that, that's the next step. So I think this fits right in with that and with your plan, right?
It does, Mr. Mayor.
Perfect. Thank you, Paul. Thanks for getting that done. Any other questions or comments? Okay, entertain an ordinance number, please, Carla?
Ordinance number 3108. An ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the sole source provider offer from Selectron Technologies Incorporated to provide relay permits for the web-based solution software, authorizing expenditure of public funds in an amount not to exceed the base amount of $35,000, and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 3108 as presented.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Carla, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes, and this is something we've been asked for, for a long time, so I'm really glad, as Lisa said, to see it on the agenda tonight.
Mayor Protem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right. So we have no boards and commissions, no ordinances, resolutions, no public meetings, public hearings, no executive session. Yay.
Thank you, Larry.
Blow through that. This is because Larry wants to start his vacation.
That's right.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Actually, about 7:30, Mr. McFarland.
No pressure. Okay.
You're optimistic, Larry.
Let's start with the reports then, and I'll start with Donna, over to my left.
Just a couple things. We have the Neon Nights event on the 6th. It was a great turnout. There's another one coming up on December 4th. Reminder that we have the parade on the 1st, and Mr. Powell and I will be downtown. He's going to be singing for the troops, I hear. So we'll be downtown, so we hope everybody gets out. And I did want to kind of do a kudos to staff. As I mentioned, as part of the trust board, I know that they did a wellness survey, and I think they had over 150 employees that actually took the survey, and I think that that's really important for us to support what we're talking about, healthy lifestyles, and we have to start with our employees. So I'm really happy about that. And on the mushy side, I'm thankful for all of you and the people that put me in this seat, and I hope everybody has a good Thanksgiving.
Mr. Powell?
Well, I'm also thankful for everybody that's up here, absolutely, Donna, staff. We have such a good group. I'm excited about, if you go out by Rodeo Road, you'll see the roof going up on, over the arena, and we've got some new bucking shoots. We're going to be on TV in March, probably. There's a rodeo here, high school, or a college rodeo, that they want to televise, so the improvements will certainly help it look more glamorous than it does sometimes, but tell Larry those original bucking shoots were put in in 1973 when I was a brand-new vice president, and it's been that long, so it works really good to get some new shoots in there and make some repairs that we need to, and it's going to make a lot of difference.
Nice. Brett?
Those bucking shoots are older than me, so I'm glad you're getting them replaced.
Yeah, but so am I.
I got to go to the shop local meeting here. Had a few people attend, good start, and I just hope that they focus on shopping local. I mean, I think we've got a good, a good start to it and a good plan, and I want to remind people to shop local, especially with the holiday seasons coming up. And local doesn't necessarily just mean small businesses, though that is great, but anybody in town, Walmart, Dillard's, where I got this ASU shirt. Big week for us this week. And, you know, but I'd just like to remind everybody of that, and that's, that's our mission. It really helps the city in so many ways to keep those tax dollars here. I got to fill in for the mayor on Friday, the 9th, at the children's flower garden planting sponsored by the attorney's office and vivid landscape of Casa Grande. So we had a lot of kids from elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools planting flowers in memory of kids who were victims of domestic abuse. And the Blue Notes were there in their formal gear, and they planted flowers in their dresses and, yeah. And so that was really neat to see all the kids of different ages, and they had a good time. So thanks, Brett, and your, your guys for helping put that together and all the city and Terry in the other office, who I think coordinated most of that. And so it was a neat thing, and it involved the whole community, sponsored by a local business, too. And happy Thanksgiving. I'm thankful for a lot of things, including you guys and the city, and it makes our job easy up here with all the staff. And I'll give thanks when we get that facility opened over there, Steve. Be excited about that. And Carla, great job tonight. It's not easy to do that, but you did a great job, so keep it up.
Ralph?
Yep.
I had the pleasure of attending the community military ball in Tucson, and Joanna Mendoza from the Veterans Coordinator here from Congressman Tom O'Halloran's office was one of the Council of Heroes that was inducted, and it represents all branches of the services. And then the Eloy had their veterans parade, and it was well-attended, and several Casa Grande entries and residents were there, and so it was good to see that regional collaboration. And then finally, just really a happy Thanksgiving, you know, for our families, our friends, council, and staff, and just real thankful to have such a wonderful community.
Lisa?
So the mayor and I and Larry attended on Friday the Pennell County Business Education Workforce Development Summit by Pennell Partnership and Arizona Network. You know, it was a great, it was a great summit. It, you know, it's, it's nice to see that the city of Casa Grande is on top of all of this stuff, you know, putting, putting education in our strategic plan. You know, we're definitely, you know, on top of it, and of course, it's, it's on top of everyone's mind, you know, as far as establishing, you know, that workforce, that, you know, how important it is to educate our young people. But I think what, what I got out of it is that we forget how important early literacy is. I mean, you know, if people can't, if these kids can't read by third grade, they're lost. And so it affects math and science and everything else. So, you know, we concentrate so much on, you know, high school and college, but that early literacy is something that we can't forget about, you know. So of course, having, you know, First Things First there and some of the other nonprofits, and you had, you know, of course, elected officials and county people, but I think it's something, of course, you know, it's hard to concentrate on everything, but we really can't forget how important that early literacy is. So the Mayor's Reading Club, I know Amber did a great job. She was on the panel, our library manager, and talked about what the city does for early literacy in the Mayor's Reading Club, and people were really impressed because a lot of cities don't have that. So, you know, with us having, what do you, how many volunteers do you have?
We have almost 90.
Yeah, 90 volunteers, and, you know, of course, and then she does a lot of programs at the library, so. But one other thing that I thought was really neat, they had these virtual career tours. Google has these goggles. You were there for those, right? So they had this panel of young kids from Eloy. Gosh, they were probably middle school. That's right, sixth, seventh grade students from Eloy, and they gave them these goggles, and they had virtual tours of different careers. So one was at a, at a steel shop, Chef Steel, and they went in and, and on the, you know, virtual tour, it showed them everything about the steel shop, what they can do, the different jobs they can have. And then one was a police department. Was the other one the police? And what was the third one? There was police that?
I saw those two.
Just those two? But, but it was really cool because it gives these kids reality, you know, you know, look at what these careers are like, what education they might need, and, and when you ask them, you know, is this something that you'd be interested in, and, you know, all this, it was just really neat. I just think that if, if I could have had that when I was in high school or even college, so, but, but that was really neat, that, that they were doing it. And Arizona Network is doing some amazing things, so, you know, we just have to keep on top of that. And then just a reminder, you know, the Elks Lodge is having the Thanksgiving dinner on Thursday, so they have plenty of volunteers, but if you want to come, or if you know of anyone that doesn't have a place to go, they're there. I think it's from 11 to 4, or something like that. And then Lencola is having a Thanksgiving dinner tomorrow night, and they're looking for pies, so if anyone wants to bring a pie by, that's what they're looking for, so.
That's at 4 also.
At 4? It's at 4 o'clock. So that's about it. Again, thankful for everything, and, you know, this is a tough time for a lot of people in our community. You know, people get lonely during these holidays, so, you know, reach out, make sure you, take a look at, you know, if you see neighbors that are by themselves and don't have any more, you know, just lend a, lend a hand to, to those that are in need at this time of year, too, so. And welcome to our winter visitors. I'm sure you're all seeing that restaurants are getting full, the stores are getting full, and, you know, the roads are getting a little busy, but, you know, we're, we're truly grateful for what they do to, to our community, our economy, so.
They're back early. Weather must be really bad.
Yes, I know.
All right, thank you, Lisa. So just to, I'm, I'm not going to hit everything that, that she hit, so I'll move on. The rec center, if you haven't seen it, the walking path in the rec center, so there's some online pictures that you can, you can check out. It's, it's really coming along nicely, and Steve, thanks for making sure that we stay on target there. I also want to remind everybody that Peert Road and Cortson really are going to be affected. Peert, Peert Road and Cortson, that's what I said. It's like Casa Grande. It's Casa Grande.
Oh, no.
Fighting words.
So Peert Road and Cortson, there's a lot of construction that will be going on over the next two months, so through February, stay off those two roads, unless you have to go there. So I just want to remind everybody that to tell everybody you know, try and stay away from there because they were widening, widening Peert all the way down to O'Neill, and also changing the whole intersection at Cortson and Peert. So it's, it's, at times, it's going to be a mess, but it'll be nice when it's done. That's the main thing. Also want to remind people that you can start signing up for the Leadership Academy. The city's Leadership Academy has the application online. It's due by the 31st of December, and it will start on January 24th. That will be the first meeting, and it goes nine weeks from that date, every Thursday. That's right, Thursday, right, Larry?
Yes.
So every Thursday. Also wanted to give everybody an update on the RTA. The RTA... So every Thursday. Also wanted to give everybody an update on the RTA. The RTA, the judge denied the plaintiff, which is the people who sued the county attorney's fees, so they denied the attorney's fees, which I'm not sure if that's a good sign or a bad sign. But there, we expect the appeal to probably be in by December 19th. So that'll be the next date to look for. They're collecting money. They have, I think, $10 million in the bank right now. So as we move forward, hopefully this will get resolved, and, and we'll have some money that we can put into Cortson Road before Lucid gets here. That's the hope anyway. Just to give everybody an idea how hard the staff is working, they have 17 different projects that are in the works, or that they're working on right now. And that doesn't include the big ones. That doesn't include Lucid, or, or Atessa, or Phoenix Mart, or, you know, any of, any of the big projects. That's 17 individual projects that, that this team is working on. So they're working very, very hard, and they're doing a very, very good job. In addition, we have 10 builders in town now. We had two a year ago, we have 10 as of today. Again, they're very busy with 10 new builders and permits and everything that comes with that. And I don't know if you, if you haven't noticed, you haven't been looking, but there's a lot of construction in town, and it's a good sign, it's good to see. I'm excited for, for what's, what's coming. I will be at the Lencola Dinner, so if you want to come serve food with me tomorrow night, Donna, I'll see you there.
Yep.
Okay, and then happy Thanksgiving. That's all I have. And Larry, go on vacation.
We got you late.
Ah, he's late.
All right.
Three minutes.
Meeting adjourned.
Tried Larry, we tried.